Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the October 18th Federway City Council meeting for 2022. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Councilmember Norton is excused this evening. She had is unavoidably detained on numerous matters, so she is excused. Okay, we'll move right into the mayor's emerging issues and report, recent community events. We had the mayor's day of concern for the food drive on October 8th, and I know that we've got Han Kirkland. Han, would you like to come forward now instead of during the public comment? And do you have some of the totals and some of that? Come on up, and you don't need a timer. Talk to us about what about the great work that you guys did.
Well, great. Hi, Mayor Farrell, council. It's great to be here tonight. Like Mayor Farrell said, I wanted to talk about the mayor's day of concern for the Hungry Food Drive. First off, I'd like to thank the city and the multi-service center for another great successful food drive. A little bit of background on this, WM's been working with the city since 2008 on the annual food drive, and it involves many steps, including printing, choosing the date, printing the flyers, giving it to our drivers to deliver to the homes, and then the following week, our route managers go to each house and pick up all the donations that are set aside, and then we deliver it to the multi-service center daily, and it gets weighed, and then the week concludes with the Saturday at a grocery store. So since 2008, with the exception of 2020, which was canceled due to the pandemic, we've collected almost 175,000 pounds of food, which is about 87.41 tons, which is just amazing, and that doesn't include the store collections. And hands down, our favorite event of the year, the drivers get so excited about delivering the food, and the food bank is so excited to weigh it every single day, and we're just so happy to be a part of this event. It's truly a great thing and benefits the Federway community. But while I was here, I also wanted to give a quick plug for our upcoming events in Federway. So on Saturday, we'll have a booth at the Federway Communities Center's trick or trick and treats event. On America Recycles Day, we're teaming up with the Chamber to do a short presentation on sustainability for businesses, and then we're working with the Environmental Services Division on Thursday, November 17th, from 6:00 to 7:00 for a virtual webinar where you can learn what to recycle, how to recycle, why do we recycle, where the recycling goes, and what to do with hard-to-recycle items. So with that, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Han, I've got some totals here.
Yay!
And once again, thank you so much for your work. And so Waste Management raised a total this year of 11,030 pounds. Last year's collection was 9,334 pounds, .5 pounds. Fred Meyer raised a total of 1,104 pounds and donations of over $1,200. So total is 12,134 pounds, six tons. So thank you very much. Thank you to Jason Smith and the team at Federway, excuse me, at the Fred Meyer Twin Lakes. They did a great job. And actually, I was joined by many of the members of the council here. We had an opportunity to, you know, talk to our neighbors as they donated some of the food. I'd like to also thank Christopher Dant and Dan Lancaster, the Multi Service Center Food Bank, and Amy Glendon on our city team. Thank you, Amy. Yeah, exactly. Did great work. So thank you, everybody. So thanks, Han, for being here. And what's that? Dan, you want to come on, come on up and say for MSA? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you very much, and thank you, Han, and Bill, and everyone that has coordinated that in my third year at the Food Bank here at Multi Service Center. Of course, you know, it all started in January 2020 when I arrived there, so I don't know what happened two months later. But what a difference it has made. Our numbers are up, and quite honestly, COVID has made us stronger because of you. We're a direct reflection of the community that we serve. So if we have people like you on our side, and Han, and folks sitting here in the various agencies, that's why we can do what we can do. And I'm proud to say we never missed a beat since January 2020. So and it's because of the support we get, we feed people. It's as simple as that. And it's amazing, and I'm so excited for the future. You know, we had that that great grocery run at Grocery Outlet, and the police department was involved. So so many things, and it's important. We see over 3,000 family visits just at our market every month. That doesn't include another 2,500 home deliveries. They're separate. If they get a home delivery, they typically don't come to the market and vice versa. So it is making a huge difference. It's keeping food in people's houses and their pantries, helping to raise their families, and it means the world to thousands of people. So what you might not see in your efforts on Mayor's Day and out there collecting food and all the work you do is the result of that, and it is meaningful. So just a big heartfelt thanks to all of you, and thanks for your support in helping us to be better. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Dan. The Multi Service Center is a real beacon of light in this community. So thank you. And and I think it's important to note that while we've had historically incredibly warm weather and the summer that would never end, the summer first that never came, and now that now it won't end, but it's going to get cold, and we're going into the and we're going into the holidays, and now is the time to really be thinking about how we're going to support really this this all-important, your food bank. And thanks for the work you do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Federway Performing Arts, we had on let this past Saturday, the 15th, the Federway Performing Arts Foundation Annual Gala Dinner and Broadway Show. It was a great, they did a great job. Thanks, everybody involved in that. The dinner was great, the performances were great, and it was great to see everybody. And it had sort of, you know, tribute bands for, you know, Johnny Cash and Jerry Lewis, and I got to go backstage before the show and meet some of the folks, and that was really fun. And so it was it was good. Good group, good groups. Okay, let's see, upcoming community events, the Multi Service Center Luncheon, the MSC Helps Luncheon, that's this Thursday, October 20th, in a couple of days, 11:30 a.m. at the Performing Arts and Events Center. We've got Tricks and Treats at the Federway Community Center. That's the Saturday before Halloween, that's October 29th, 3 p.m. Fun for the whole family. And now, the most important part of the of the evening, public comment. And folks have filled out the pink sheets. Anybody interested in speaking, please fill one of these out. We've just asked that you identify what what community you live in, whether it's here or another one. We don't need your address, though. And with that, and remember, green is go, yellow means 30 seconds, red means please stop. I hate to I hate to interrupt people. Okay, Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jeff Tancredi, Federway resident, 27 years. Time flies. Wanted to bring up the the joint, proposed joint city council, school board meeting. I'm not sure, Mayor, if you've had any consultations with Mr. Eto and Quentin Morris. They were working on the November 29th joint session. I don't know if they've decided on a location where that's going to be, but anyway, I just wanted to bring it up since we're a little over a month out. We've been, you know, we've been working with them, you know, speaking at public comment to get them to be on TV, because the people, the residents of Federway deserve to know how their tax dollars are being spent, how their schools are doing. So anyway, we were told that November 29th was the date for the joint meeting between with the city council and the school board. We just didn't know. I know Heather Farory worked with you in the past on that to try to make that happen. But anyway, just wanted to get an update to find out when that might be, if it's still going to be November 29th. Some of the school board members, they were saying, well, let's wait till after the election, which I don't understand why you would want to wait till after the election. It's irrelevant. The election is immaterial to this being on TV so that the residents of Federway can know how their schools are doing. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
I can give you an update on that. Linda Coachmeyer and I are in discussions with both President Eto and Director Morris as to our next planning meeting, which will be at the end of October. It's October now. And the combined meeting will be sometime in early December, possibly, or maybe a little bit later. But the November 29th date was not a date set in stone, and I'm sorry that that got out like that. We are, we are working with them, and we are very excited to, and it will be in this room so that it can be televised.
Okay, thank you.
We wanted to make sure that everybody's schedules would allow them to be here.
Okay, I see. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, Stephen Meyer.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much. My name's Steve Meyer, Federway, and I'm an elder at Journey Church, which is located on 320th and the heart of our great city of Federway. It's just blocks from the downtown corridor. I want to talk to you about some of the things that have been happening. We have two vans, a half-size bus and a cargo trailer, that's used to transport our youth and other community members to events and service projects. So every possible locking device has been employed and attempted to maximize security with boot, alarms, cameras, locks, everything. Yet, in spite of all that in the last two years, one van has been stolen twice, recovered with damage both times. It's been used as a campsite where the interior was completely trashed. It had the catalytic converter stolen, locks punched out. The trailer's been stolen twice, recovered once and replaced once. It's been vandalized multiple times. The other van's been stolen two times, vandalized three times, had its catalytic converter stolen twice. The bus has been attempted to be stolen three times, had its fuel stolen, fuel lines cut, locks broken, windows broken, mirrors, batteries stolen twice, including this last Sunday. A bunch of things. Additional security issues that we've had, we've had attendees' cars that have been broken into at least five times in the last 12 months. Many of these are on camera. They've been reported to the police, but they've not been able to respond. We've had multiple stolen cars that have been dumped in our parking lot. We've had suspected drug deals that have happened in the back lot, reported by neighbors. We've had the police call for drug activity in the parking lot, and we've had the building vandalized. There's been homeless camp on our property. We've removed them and talked to them, but twice now, they've been armed, and they've threatened us with with weapons when we approached them. Our insurance rates because of these are climbing. They're threatening to to drop us, and they're also, they're starting to have a real problem with all these issues that we're having to report. Repairs and replacements have cost us approximately $50,000 in the last few years, and many of our congregants don't feel safe walking from the building to their vehicles, which is no more than 100 feet. So Journey is not the only church that's a victim to these crimes. Increasingly, more churches of Federway have been targeted for these types of crimes. Most visibly, Christ Church has had their church van torched in their parking lot. So these are not victimless crimes. You know, Journey Church has tried to be a force of good in the community. You know, we've worked with other civic organizations, the communities and schools. We love our city, to name a few, and to improve the community. So every dollar that we have to spend on these crimes reduces what we can do to help our community. So we just ask that you would please help. I'm the son of a police officer. I back the blue. We just want to support them so that they can do their best work.
Thank you, Stephen. Chief, would you please have a representative reach out while while Stephen is in the in the room and coordinate and and either, you know, crime prevention and maybe even assistance with Special Operations Unit or SOU?
Will do, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Ted Gentry.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. My name's Ted Gentry. I've been a member, I've been a community resident here in Federway for over 35 years. Worked for Fire Department for 2029 of those. I've been around here for quite a bit. I'm currently assigned as the head of security at Journey Church. Steve is on my team. It may sound strange to have a security team for a church, but our situations, our communities, the crime rate have made that to be a very necessary item, and many of our churches in the area are doing that. In an effort to stop the vehicle crime that Steve described earlier in our on our property, we've been attempting to to build a garage to store our vehicles in. It's planned to be a 1,500-square-foot detached unheated garage. We're using volunteer labor to build it as much as possible. The structure's estimated to cost about $50,000 to build. However, when we approached the the planning committee and the permitting committees and asked what we could expect for permitting, we're told that we can expect over $11,000 in fees to be permitted to build this structure. $3,000 to $4,000 of that is is building fees, is permit fees, and over $7,000 of that is traffic abatement fees. Traffic abatement for a building that will not add one vehicle worth of traffic to our property. It's simply to house the vehicles that are already on our property. When we asked why why this was the case, we were told, well, you may it may be a garage structure now, but we can't guarantee that it'll always be a garage structure, so it might affect traffic in the future, so we need to charge you these fees. This is an unheated, uninsulated building that's all roll-up doors on one side. There's really not much chance this is going to be used for anything but a garage in the future. To spend this kind of money on a garage is a major stretch for us financially, and the additional 20% plus in city fees puts this all but out of reach for us. It's been our experience in the past that fees tend to escalate as the permit process goes on, so we don't know whether that's going to be the end of the fees or whether there's more on top of that. We're frustrated by the crime that we've been we've experienced and the city's seeming inability to stop it. We're simply trying to fix at least a part of the problem on our side, but it seems that city policy is actively getting in the way of our solution. For to fix this, we need the city's help, not excessive fees. We're asking for the city to reduce or eliminate the fees for this project so we can protect our assets and continue to be a positive force in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Brian, would you would you reach back out to Ted, get his, I've got, we've got his contact information, but he's here in the room now. Let's get our arms around what's going on there, and let's you and I talk about tomorrow, if I could get a summary of it. Thank you for coming and letting us know about that. Ken Blevins, and then Betty Taylor.
Hello, Mayor, council. Thanks for hearing me. 50-year resident of Federway, born and raised. And I feel you guys over there at that at your church, I'm here, we're hearing it a lot, too. So there were quite a bit of cars burnt down, not just that van that was at the other church that you guys were talking about. Stand Up Federway is something that I started about a year and a half ago with a bunch of community members because of these concerns. We thought that we could go out there and try to move the homeless people out. Found out that there were homeless drug addicts, and addiction is the real issue when it comes to that, and then also found out that they've been basically sent to our city and our police departments just doing the best they can to fight them back and help them out. But our state legislature's done everything to tie their hands to be able to do that, and I'm not sure everybody knows that it's not the city that's not having a problem. We did replace a lot of council members last year because they didn't seem concerned, and they were going along with what King County and the state of Washington was had had up for store for us. They they voted in 1220, which regionalized homeless drug homelessness, and what that means is these are chronically homeless from Seattle that they're going to bring down to Federway. And I'm not sure if you knew this, but the one of the commissions, our planning director, I believe, came to the commission and asked for, I think, 1,200 to 1,400 drug addicts to be brought down from Seattle to here because that was our need. And the reason why it was our need is because we have a day center and we have woods. We have a place for these to be. That's how many they sent down here. They did a count and so on, and they thought that would be a great idea. I think zero homeless drug addicts in our town is the better way to go. I think people need to get up and vote in the state level so they stop this. They make drugs, heavy drugs, illegal from now on. They make it so that the police can actually stop these people, arrest them, and actually get them help, not put them in jail, but actually get them treatment. But what they've done is they've tied the hands of the police, and the police, we back the blue. Everybody should back the blue because they back us. You know, we're not going to call some counselor to come help us when someone's trying to shoot us. The police will be there, and it'll be there to try to help even the person trying to shoot us, right? But they can't. So what I'm asking people to do is please go out there, vote. If we had a forum last night, Stand Up Federway did, most of the candidates didn't show up that made these votes that really hurt our city, but check it out at Stand Up Federway. Go to PAC, the PAC part of it, or standupfederwaypac.com, and you'll see what the candidates that we're backing are going to be there. We want them to go to Olympia, change the law so that it'll help us out as citizens, and we want people to represent us, that that represent us in Federway, not Republicans, Democrat, and so on. Vote for who's doing what's best for us. And when we say no more hotels with drug addicts in them, with no background checks and no treatment involved, that means no. They still voted on that. They still made it happen. Now they're coming here. So just want to make people aware, and I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Betty Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor, and I've been a resident of Federway over 25 years. I'm coming to you not as, I'm going to represent, I'm here representing the Human Service Commission. So last night, we had our meeting, had a meeting, and we went over a lot of, we had an agenda, okay? And so, you know, like over the, this year, funds have been allocated to different nonprofits and stuff. We talked about that. We talked about the money coming in. We talked about agencies. Some we gave money, some we couldn't. We got down to the ARPA funds. That was for me, as a commissioner, and reviewing the ARPA funds and the amount that is allocated, which is $3 million, that's not enough. That is not enough. That's just not enough. Because there's a lot of agencies in the city that that without funding, they can't operate. So it was just like a, and I know that I might be too early, I mean, I may be too early by stating all this, but I'd rather jump in it right away because we need more funding. If the Human Service Commission is going to be responsible for allocating funding to different agencies, we and we don't have enough. We need more. $3 million is not enough for ARPA funding. It is not. So therefore, we are asking, and I am speaking on behalf of my federal commissioners, because I told them I was going to do this, but I, you know, on behalf of the Human Service Commission, because our task is to decide the allocation of this funding, where's all this money going to go, you know, and stuff like that. And we take what we do very seriously. This is really hard work. It's not easy. It's really hard. We stay up nights and nights and nights, going over application, going over grants, reading, make sure that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. We need more funding for these agencies. This is not a joke. $3 million is not enough. So I don't know where the money could be coming from, but if y'all could ask, we just, we don't have enough, and it's hurting. It's hurting us, especially we're the ones responsible for having to figure out where is this money going to go? How are we going to do this? We have to divide, add, subtract. And it's very, I mean, really. So I am asking for more funding, please.
Thank you, Betty. Okay, Josiah Jean Pierre.
Hello, Josiah Jean Pierre, Federway resident. Looking the back wall, sending opportunity for Federway. My question I have for you guys is, opportunity for who and when? Talking about the ARPA funds. This is a time for Federway to rise up, look beyond businesses, look at community as a whole, city as a whole. Talking about inflation, pandemic, and opportunities of ARPA funds being released and dispersed. The first thing I will say to focus on is look at opportunity for Federway. What can we do in Federway to help residents and citizens in Federway who lives here? What can we do? I know multiple people who live in Federway, neighbors, even people who have mortgages, who are like, man, we're down for the count. We don't know what to do next. And it hurts to hear that. As someone who lives in Federway, and I know the vision of Federway is sending opportunity, and every time I come in, I ask the same question, opportunity for who? Mayor, you know, I understand that you are taking your next adventure of running for King County Prosecutor. I want you to really focus more on the vision before you do anything else. I'm not calling you out or anything, but because as long as I've been in this city, and as long as I stood up here and talked, I asked for the same thing over and over again, opportunity, opportunity, people are hurting for Federway. Here's some some ARPA funds, and not one time have I heard from anybody from the city council, especially Mayor, the one who is the face of the city council, of, hey, this is how we're going to go get at the community. Forget about the businesses. I'm talking about, yes, businesses are good, but the people who live here in Federway, the residents of Federway who are hurting, being impacted. At what point will we say, you know what, let's put our money where our mouth is? Let's focus back on the vision of Federway, send an opportunity, not just for businesses, but for the folks who live here in the city. I encourage the council to release more ARPA funds for human services. Right now, the council had allocated $3 million in human services, but that's over a four-year timeframe. That means annually about $750,000 to spend between four-year human services priorities. One, basic human needs like food and housing. Two, youth services like mental health, mentoring and safety programs. Our kids are hurting out here. And if you all can invest back in community, we would love that and appreciate that to be impact for our community. Three, educating and training like job readiness programs. And four, financial services. Federway residents need more funding to address the impact of COVID. The council should allocate whatever remaining ARPA funds are to human services. People over profit, nonprofit over people. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Hatch.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and the council. Appreciate your service and your selfless and sometimes thankless service. I'm here with with Steve and Ted, and I'm not going to repeat what they've said, but I will say that we would really covet your leadership in helping us to solve this problem. We have a lot of resources we put in. We're willing to do the work, but we do need somebody to talk to us and and other churches and put together a comprehensive plan to to address this. You know, we don't want to send anybody to jail. We don't want to, you know, people do need to pay for what they do, but bottom line is, that's not what it's about. It's about our, our, you know, our, the money that we do have, we want to put to good use, and they're taking away a lot of resources against from other people in the community, and we would like to to have your help there. And again, on the, on the, on the traffic issue, there's a paragraph in your FAQ on your traffic mitigation fees that addresses particularly the case of a change in use. So I don't see any need to assess that particular fee when you already have written, here's what we do in this case where the use actually changes. There's no need to charge for that in advance. So I would ask for just, you know, for your oversight in that process to make sure it's appropriately applied. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I'll talk with Brian Davis tomorrow, who's the head of CD and the interim city administrator, and we'll, we're going to take a and we'll, we're going to take a close look at this. And Chief, thank you for having Commander Bunk, you know, touch base with them, and thank you, Commander, to make sure that we're doing what we can. Can we have a conversation maybe tomorrow just about kind of what the plan of action is?
Absolutely, Mayor. We'll partner with them, and we'll see what we can do to mitigate. What we can do, maybe what their security force can do, and we'll look at crime stats, and we'll go from there. But we'll partner with them.
Let's do this. When you update me via email, would you include the entire council in that reply? Just to make sure the council, because this was the product of comment at the city council meeting.
Sure, I can provide that.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure the council gets the follow-up. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Commander. Appreciate it. Okay, and thank you very much for coming tonight. It's really, it is important that government works on a common sense level, so we're going to take a look at that. And I know that, you know, that we want to make sure that we're doing everything that's not, you know, the government works for people instead of against it, so we work for you. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. Sanu Tushabi.
Sanu Tushabi, Federway resident. I appreciate all your good work, council, and everyone that's here today. I am curious. When I drive around Federway, I see a lot of new storage units, and that has piqued my interest, especially since we're talking about homelessness. I think basic economics would tell us that supply and demand for housing units is, impacts the rates of housing rental properties and mortgages. So, and I know that people are frustrated with homelessness and the homeless population, but I think if we're to look at root causes, say just one demographic of the homeless population is, say, veterans. Trauma, trauma-informed practices would tell us that we support humans. So I will go back to my question about storage units. I am wondering, is there a land use committee? Who is on that committee? Do we have young people on that committee? Because we are committing long-term land use practices that they are going to pay for. I think behavioral health tells us that the less green spaces we have impacts mental health. So I am wondering, do we see the people? Or do we want to build more storage units in prime real estate that could be used for housing? I am wondering, how many Federway residents are hired by all these storage units? My assumption is, you just need a few people to work a storage unit, right? So is Federway really getting return on investment for our residents allocating land long-term to storage units? What is the opportunity cost? If we were to build other real estate options that serve Federway residents, what are we missing out on by allocating this land to storage units? What else do we get from these storage units? Okay, taxes, I don't know what that is, but how much more time do I have? May I, may I request an email, contact information for somebody on the land committee? I am passionate about this, and I would really like to be involved. And I'm hoping there's also somebody who's previously been homeless on that land use committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Tushabi, actually, just this very morning, in early morning hours, I drove by one of the storage places this morning. I had the same thought. This council actually, just, this is a land use issue and about a zoning issue. The council previewed, just a very short answer, we're going to have somebody get in touch with you. In fact, Brian, if you could have, are you going to talk? What I'd like to do is, number one, just tell you that this council actually did put a moratorium on the building of storage facilities for a time. However, that eventually had to end, and the zoning in certain areas allows it by statute, and we couldn't permanently bar it, so it's somewhat market-driven. But you've, I don't know about the relationship between the homelessness and the storage units, but it's been market-driven, but I, trust me, I drove by one on Pacific Highway this morning. I had the very same thought. We'll have Brian reach out to you. Somebody with our staff will give you a little bit of the history. But anyway, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. A great deal of work and thought has gone into that very issue. Okay. Yasemin Wago, or Wago, Wago? And then Devonte Parson.
Hi, my name is Yasemin, and I just wanted to say what I noticed. I noticed that whenever an or whites would speak, you guys would have something to say afterwards. But when us blacks spoke, you guys didn't really have anything to say, only when she had spoke. But I just feel as though we should be treated evenly, and I just, I think that what you, how you guys are acting isn't the way that we should be treated.
Okay. I thank you for your comment. I respond when, where particular follow-up is necessary or particular question is implicated. So thank you. Devonte Parson.
How you doing? Devonte Parson. I'm actually, I'm a resident of Federway now. I was a resident back in my teenage years. I actually grew up in Seattle, heavy in the gang, gang lifestyle, in and out of the juvenile system, juvenile jail, prison. My change in life came at 22 years old, facing a life sentence, when I realized I hadn't lived enough life to have a life sentence, right? And in that time, I spent, after I spent six years in prison, focused on self-development and recreating myself. And I came out and dedicated my life to helping our young individuals, specifically in South King County, because a lot of the stuff from gentrification in Seattle had pushed out here. That's why you see a lot of the street and gang violence that is going on. And I built a business out here called Pro Say Potential. Our office is out in, excuse me, off of 336th Street, where we focus on empowering our youth and young adults to become strong, bold leaders, especially our BIPOC youth. The one thing that I bring to a lot of different podiums, I've been to a lot of different speeches I brought, is that I want people to understand that at one point, just because a young person is experiencing some sort of, like we brought up trauma, or some sort of behavior that's getting to be mistaken as criminals, or thugs, or gangsters, or whatever, we have to understand that there's a lifestyle behind it, and there is potential for that to be changed, right? If the right people and the right resources are placed around them, they're able to be guided along the way to make that change. Because I'm a direct result of that. I was one of the worst of the worst. The city of Federway called me a mini-society at one point. The city of Seattle didn't want me there. They called me a monster at one point. But I was able to reorganize my life and build a business out of it, and help a lot of youth and young adults like the young lady Yasemin and other young individuals there. What I want to make sure that we focus on as we move forward, because I do hear that there's different prosecutor runs that are happening, there's different things about diversion programs that are looked down upon. A lot of stuff is happening in the city of Federway, and I've been in meetings where people are focusing on, like, let's get more police, let's put these different things in place to arrest these young people and put them away. I want us to focus more on the CBOs, the community-based organizations. Now, they can be proven community-based organizations, let's be honest. They can prove a community-based organization. But let's focus on that, because we focus on the individuals that are in touch with the community, and these young adults, and these youth, and their families, that are being tied to the different things going on. And we resource them and give them someone to hand a walk on that's been walking through the same trenches and the same traumas and the things that they've been through, but have escaped it and know the way to escape it, will have much better results than putting them in jail and prison and locking them up, right? Because I was one of the few that was able to make it out. When I was in there, some people died. Some people were murdered inside there. And some people went so crazy in there that they weren't able to live out here, right? So let's find these different approaches and invest more into our proven community members and have them invest into the community and save the ones. Because if we're closest to the problem, those are the ones that are closest to the solution. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Devonte. I've got Bill Vedino in the back of the room. Could you please obtain? If you'd be willing to meet with me, I'd like to sit down and talk with you about some of these issues. Great, thank you. Okay, all right. I don't have any more pink sheets available. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your public comment. It's all very important, and...
Mayor, sorry. We had someone raise their hand online.
Okay.
Cynthia Rix-MacIntan. She just raised her hand right now.
Okay.
Thomas can unmute her from the back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Cynthia Rix-MacIntan. Good to see you all. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a caregiver of my mother-in-law. I can't leave the home at the present moment. I wanted to talk to you all about three issues. One of them, in support of Betty Taylor, our fellow Human Services Commissioner, we do need additional funding, ARPA funding. So if there's any funding left over that has not been allocated, will you please consider, strongly consider, allocating any remaining ARPA funds to human services? The $3 million over four years is not enough, especially given the need out there. The second area I wanted to discuss tonight is, thank you so much for changing the rules or the requirements to participate on the Youth Commission. I think now that it is opened up, you'll see more students, especially students of different backgrounds, being able to apply and be a part of the Youth Commission. So thank you for changing those requirements and opening it up so that we can have more of an inclusive representation of students and our scholars to participate on the Youth Commission. Lastly, I want to dovetail on what Devonte said and some other issues concerning our youth. We've seen an uptick in suicide. We've seen an uptick in domestic violence, gang violence, vaping, substance use with our youth in the last few years. And I think a lot of it has to do with the pandemic and not having constructive, safe places to go because we couldn't assemble during some portions of the pandemic. It's really important that we invest as much as we possibly can into programs to support our youth. They are our future. Hence the reason why we definitely need more funding for ARPA. But more importantly, we need the city council, the mayor, to strongly come out and work with those organizations that are providing a safety net for our youth here. They need to see you, present in some of their programs, speaking good things and breathing good things into our youth. It would be great if each of you could reach out to three or four different youth organizations, make yourself available, and talk to our youth, and let those organizations know that they're doing great things, that you appreciate what they're doing for our youth. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and you all have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. Brian, there's been three comments, I believe at least three, regarding enhancement of ARPA funds for, just to follow up, enhancement of ARPA funds for community services. So would you, number one, let's put this on an agenda for you and I to discuss, but number two, reach back out to these individuals and let them know of opportunities when those are going to be discussed in the community services realm, either at the commission meetings or city council, and let them know when those conversations, because I think it's going to be about allocation, and make sure that there's a meaningful opportunity to follow up and have discussions about that funding. And whether there's any, I know that we had gone through, part of the reason I didn't initially do this is because we have, we've had a lengthy process in which the council has gone through this very publicly and did make the allocation, at least initially. But there's going to be, for the ultimate selection, as many people may not know, about how those dollars are going to be spent. So let's get into that and make sure that people are aware of how that's done. Did you, you've got, okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
We have two more people. Hands raised.
All right, thank you.
Suzanne Vargo and then Trinise Rogers.
Okay.
Thomas will unmute them.
Okay, Trinise? Excuse me, excuse me, Trinise first?
Suzanne Vargo.
Oh, Suzanne Vargo.
Hi, thank you, Council. I just wanted to get a quick step here. I just want to speak once again about the operations and maintenance facility.
Suzanne, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you, is it, we need to amplify your voice somehow. We can barely hear her, Thomas.
One second, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we start my time over by chance?
Yes. Did you hit the restart? Okay, yeah, well, okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you so much. Resident of 57 years, Suzanne Vargo. I would like to speak up against the operations and maintenance facility and the taking of our beloved Annex Park. The decision and the justification for saying that the town square park is equal to an actual living park with real tree canopy, wildlife, dirt, a view shed, and the character of Federway, comparing that to an impervious surface that has basically a playground and no fields and no actual natural resources, is despicable. It is so infuriating how we all speak up. I was raised by a grandfather who wrote to his city and his state, and a letter made a difference. And I have spoke nearly 40 times about our environment and the need for open spaces, green spaces, and trying to keep up with our growth management and our comprehensive plan, only to be ignored, only to have dramatic representation of city officials fighting for their needs, which is something that should have been taken care of nearly 27 years ago. So please, stop making your problems our problems. We've got schools nearby. We have senior citizens nearby. These are fee-paying fields that contribute to the city and its tax base. To put them and to say that you will justify and support Lakota and Sacagawea is taking organizations away from our restaurants, our hotels, and the hub of our city, which we need that support desperately. I went over to Lakota the other day, and there are 10 overhead lights. You said, well, we'll justify it, and we'll turn those lights on, and we'll make that a usable space. And I'm quite concerned why it is not a usable space and why those lights aren't on and active today. The fuel line that you have requested is an environmental nightmare for Steel Lake and the surrounding area. It will bring increased traffic as all of your maintenance vehicles will have to come by this area. There has got to be another place in Federway for you to utilize this, and the other options have been exorbitantly exaggerated as to how much they would cost. $40 million for three pieces of parcels is absolute lie. Any basic person can add it up, and it's about $1.5 million. That is well within the budget, according to some council members. I please beg of you to get creative, stop this insanity, and do the right thing for your citizens that elected you. I appreciate you. I know how hard you work. I know the times we are in, but I am convinced that we can do so much better, and you must. Thank you so much.
All right, Trinise Rogers.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to first begin with saying thank you to you, Yasemin. For giving me the courage enough to speak today, based on my last appearance with y'all. I thank God for Yasemin's wisdom, awareness, and courage, as was evident in her statement today. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for speaking on behalf of your commission as I serve on the diversity commission. And with that, I say the diversity commission has made a very intentional effort, a very intentional effort to engage the city staff, community members, community members, and attending city council meetings over the last couple of months. An urgent issue about accessibility with our federal, with our federal ARPA funds is a concern of the commission. It is apparent to the diversity commission that our diversity, that our diverse community-based organizations does not have the needed information of how to prepare or where to apply for the ARPA funds. Most cities have released their ARPA funds at this time and throughout their communities. The diversity commission would like to partner with the city to make sure all community organizations, businesses, faith-based organizations have equal access and timeframe to prepare and apply for these funds. The question community members are asking, organizations have been asking us directly, really are, where will we, where will there be technical assistance from the city to help organizations, businesses, faith-based organizations prepare for ARPA funds? What type of language support will the city provide for businesses, organizations, faith-based organizations to apply for these funds? And what new methods will the city provide to distribute information about ARPA funds availability outside the city website and the federal mirror? Such an ethic, like, we have examples like maybe utilizing ethnic newspapers, ethnic radio stations, websites, or even cultural centers. But the diversity commission will be providing the city with continued community engagement updates regularly. It's imperative that we work together swiftly to get this information out to all community members timely so everyone has ample amount of time to prepare and apply for these ARPA funds. We look forward to getting a written response from each of you as we have submitted in writing to the City Council and Mayor regarding these asks. We look forward to getting a written response from you all to learn how we can move forward in assisting small business owners, nonprofit organizations, and community members that provide services, products, and/or programs to help people that live, work, and play in our city. Thank you for your time.
All right. Brian, can you?
Yeah, we provided a response, and we can forward it to the council for your information.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Trinise, and thank you for your work. Okay. Are there any other public comments? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's now move on to presentations. Number five, A, recognition of Arts Alive winners, Arts Commission. Let's see. Arts Commission Chair Vicki Chenoweth and Vice Chair Karen Brigado.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council, and community members. I am Vicki Chenoweth, Chairman of the Federway Arts Commission. On behalf of the Arts Commission, thank you for making the time to celebrate the art of the community. I am honored to be here tonight to recognize the winners of this year's Arts Alive Choice Award and celebrate the first gallery exhibition of the Performing Arts and Events Center. The slideshow cannot do justice to talent, to the talent of these artists have displayed and their work, and we encourage you all to go to the Performing Arts and Events Center during box office hours, and you can see all of the work that is there. But before we announce the winners, just a little bit about the exhibit. The Arts Alive Juried Art Exhibition is a program designed to give regional artists the opportunity to display their work in a public setting. Artists working with a wide range of media were encouraged to participate. Thank you all to all the artists who submitted their work. It was a pleasure to see all the wonderful arts that adorned the newest gallery and space at the Performing Arts and Events Center. This year, the exhibition was juried by local artist Enanda Elknitz. Anyway, I slaughtered it. It's E-L-K-S-N-I-T-I-S, along with other arts commissioners and the public with an opportunity to vote for their favorites during the last three and a half weeks. About 15 submissions this year. The choice results are as follows. And as I read the artist's name, if they could come up, and I'll present them with their certificate, and we will, we will get their cash to them at a later date. For the People's Choice Award, the recipient of the $100 cash award, the winner is H. Chong Lee for painting titled Dear Grandson. For the commission's choice recipient of $150 cash award, the winner is Molly Murray for her watercolor titled Black Beauty. And the juror's choice and the recipient of the $200 cash award and the one person, and a one-person exhibition for the Federway City Hall in January 2023, the winner is Molly Murray for her watercolor entitled Country Girl. Please help me again and congratulate these winners and the artists here tonight. And I would ask that all artists that were in the art show come up here and the arts commissioners that are here, if we could take a picture with the council.
Down here? Okay. Oh, should we stand up here, or should we get down here?
You want to stand there, Vicki?
Sure.
All right. Okay. Now, moving right along. This is, next is item six, Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, we met a week ago this evening, and several items in the consent agenda came out of that committee, and then the discussion on shopping carts. We discussed it extensively, and we, we put it on the, on the agenda for this evening. So that will be further discussed this evening.
All right, great, thank you. Land Use and Transportation, L U T C. Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up the first week in November. I think it's November 1st, is it not? 5:00 here in the council chambers. One of the things that will be coming up, as you remember, we worked on the fees for the school impact fees, and coming through, we'll be talking about park fees and looking at that in the future for land use.
Okay, great. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October 25th, at 5:00 PM here in this room, as well as on Zoom. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one applicant for the committee from a hotelier. So hopefully, we'll have a quorum to have a meeting. There's also a grant application that we have received. So hopefully, we'll have a meeting coming up. November 10th, is it? November 10th, no, November 9th, I'm sorry. So, thank you. Unless there's anything you want to add by? Yes. They still need to be interviewed, but maybe not November meeting then. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I just want to remind council that there are some commissions that you can apply for, not just locally, but at the state level. So AWC sent out an email reminding us about an opportunity to serve on state commissions, and they do this a few times a year. And currently, they have an opportunity for an elected person to serve on the Community Forestry Council, the Sentencing Guidelines Committee, and Emergency Management Council. And AWC has advisory committees that you can apply for. One is the Board Nominating Committee, the Bylaws Review Committee, the Federal Legislative Committee. And there are two others, but I serve on the other two committees, and I think that you can only have one per city. So I was appointed for two years, so I'm, would be entering my second year. The reason I bring this up is because it's really important as council members that we have a regional and statewide voice. And you really learn a lot when you're on these committees, especially the statewide ones with AWC, because you learn what they're doing in Spokane and other parts of the state that we can bring back here. So it's all, it's really interesting. I think you might enjoy some of these. And these commissions don't meet every month. They're like every three to four months. So it's not that much of a time commitment, but their meetings are in the daytime. So that's something that you'd have to be cautious of. SCA Regional Boards and Commissions. So the deadline for those commissions to apply for is November 6. And if you are interested, I can get you the information that SCA Regional Boards and Committees, the deadline is November 10 by 5:00 PM. So those are local. Once again, unfortunately, they all meet in the daytime, but if you're interested, it's certainly worth your time. Some of those meet once a month. Some of them meet every three to four months. So depending on your time commitment and the amount of time that you're able to get away from your day job and do something like this, and your interest in whatever it is that the commissioner or the committee is doing, you might want to look into that. If you have any questions, please ask me, or Lydia, Sepa Dawson, is on some regional committees too. So we'd be, we'd love to help you get more involved in the broader picture of being a council member. AWC also has been offering some workshops called Elected Officials Essentials webinars. And these have been every couple of months, Wednesdays at lunchtime from 11:30 to 1:00. They're online. I've registered for them, which means that everyone here can watch them at your leisure. Tomorrow, they're having one on Effective Local Leadership. And November 2nd, there's one on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Over the last, since the beginning of the year, they have had different topics that they've talked about. So if you're interested, you can ask Amy. She can hook you up with it. It's an hour and a half, but you can watch them whenever you're interested, and they might be of interest to you. Tomorrow, the Senior Advisory Commission meeting is meeting here, over there in the Hilebus Room, from 2:00 to 4:00. They're always an interesting group of people to work with. They're, they have a lot of energy, and they're doing a lot of things for the seniors here in Federway. And Thursday, I'll be attending the King County Board of Health meeting, which is something I've had to apply for through SCA, and that is a committee that does meet at least once a month. So thank you very much. I appreciate all that you do.
All right, thank you. Council President.
Deputy Mayor, do you think we could get a report periodically from the senior commission? Deputy Mayor? Do you think we could periodically get a report from the senior commission on the needs of our seniors and what they're doing to help them?
Sure, do you want them to?
Maybe once a quarter.
Once a quarter?
Yeah.
To come to?
To the council and make a report?
To come to the city council meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, because we don't really hear from them. You know, we'll hear from parks through normally, but that would be a good thing, huh?
They were here in May, but yeah, we can.
Yeah, let's do it again. Okay, thank you. The other, and the reason I bring that up is because at the holidays, it's always a hard time for our seniors. And we need to know what their needs are so that we don't have any people in isolation in the community where they can't get out and get the things that they need. So Deputy Mayor Honda and I will be going to Master Builders Association Housing Solutions Breakfast in Bellevue. That'll be Thursday. And so that's one of the issues that we're dealing with in our city. So we'll bring back information on that. October 21st is the Super Supper. If you don't know what the Super Supper is, it'll be Christian Face Center at 5:00 and 5:30 to 8:00. And what that is, is the soups are donated from the restaurants in the area. And the money that is paid to go to this supper is then to help people with the Community Caregivers Network. I believe Councilmember Dobie was the chair of that group. And then October 29th, just so you know, is the last day for the farmer's market. So if you have any need to go to the farmer's market for vegetables, that would be your last day to do that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, could Councilmember Sepa Dawson report on the PIC meeting? I wasn't able to attend.
Oh, sure.
She did, as an alternate.
Councilmember?
Put me on the spot, right? No, I'm just kidding. Excuse me. Yeah, I did attend the PIC meeting last Wednesday, and there were a lot of subjects and topics, not subjects, but topics that were brought up. But to highlight a few, one was the Behavioral Health Crisis Care Centers, the levy proposal. And this proposal creates five new regional crisis centers and preserves residential treatment beds. And then there was a climate change and comp planning that was also brought up. And they're, they want every jurisdiction to update the comp plans before the deadline of December 21, 2024, for that. And then the legislative agenda for 2023, they collected cities legislative agendas, and they're trying to put together an agenda to focus on common treads that all the cities have. And then the King County Regional Housing Authority Homelessness Five-Year Plan. SCA is planning a lunch and learn to learn about their progress, and I believe that is November 4. And they'll send out, yeah, I think they already sent out the notice, yeah. And then one topic, another topic was hazardous waste management coordination. And then levies and ballots, levies and ballot measures in King County that they listed, all the upcoming levies and ballots. So that's what they covered. There was a lot, and yeah. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, yeah, thank you. Okay, now, moving on to item seven, the Consent Agenda. These items have gone through committee. It could be passed all at once, or after I read them all, I ask council if a member would want to pull them for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the September 29, 2022 special meeting, October 4, 2022, regular and special meetings. B, resolution for the 2023 to 2025 Solid Waste and Recycling Grant approvals. C, award the 2023 Right-of-Way Landscaping Services Contract. D, inter-local agreement amendment within city Federway and Federway Public Schools for School Resources Officers. E, jail services contract, King County Jail. F, jail services contract, Issaquah City Jail. Council, or is there a member that would want to pull an item for separate consideration? Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
I would like to pull 7E and 7F.
E and F. Okay, council, any others? All right, council president.
I move approval of items A through D on the consent agenda.
Second.
I'm going to motion a second with respect to A through D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passed unanimously. Item E and E and F. Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
Yes, I do have a question. And 7E, we're putting $548,000 with the contract with King County? And then item F is 400, 1,500 with Issaquah, right? Is it Issaquah? Okay. So my question really is if we don't utilize all
Okay, so my question really is, if we don't utilize all those funds, if they're not all spent, what do we do with, with the, um, yeah, unspent funds?
There would be an, uh, year-end balance at the conclusion of the year, but I would tell you that, um, our ADP, Average Daily Population of Inmates from Federal Way, um, is significantly higher today than it was a year ago, even two years ago, so, um, I don't think there'll be really, really any leftover. As you recall, uh, we left SCORE Jail, at that time our jail budget was around 6.4 million. Now our jail budget, uh, is 3.3, and I think, um, last year we spent less than that, around 2.5 million was what we actually ended up spending, so, um, but I don't, projecting forward, um, all the jail costs are going up. Those are, um, if we need more money than that, we'll come to council again, but we're making good faith estimates. We have several jail, uh, contracts, and we'll be bringing two more jail contracts next month. We're no longer, um, part of the ownership of SCORE, we're our, we contract services for jail services now, which is bringing significant savings to the city, probably about $3 million a year.
I appreciate that very much. Um, I do like the savings. The reason I'm asking this question is, um, we keep hearing about youth programs and youth services that could help kids from not getting in trouble, so it's getting to the root cause of all these problems that our youth are facing. And as I was looking at that, one thing, I have, um, a very dear friend of mine whose son is now in jail because he ended up being, hanging around the wrong crowd, and had he had an adult, a responsible adult in his life, I think that outcome would have been different. And so the more I hear programs that are tar, um, targeting youth to help them, I think we need to really emphasize and support those programs, and so finding money any way possible to get to where these youth are not incarcerated and they're supported by caring adults and programs that would help them. And as Devonte was sharing his story, I think I still went back to that going, um, I wonder what his life would have been had he been around caring adults. So that's why I was hoping there would be money left over, so that maybe we can capture those kinds of funds to support programs that would help youth from getting in trouble in the first place, so. Thank you very much, and that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you move approval of?
I, I, I move approval of, you okay? I move approval of, uh, Items A through F on the consent agenda.
Aye, second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, E and F were passed unanimously. All right, now, we're on to Item 8, Public Hearing. I'll now open the public hearing with respect to the, uh, rev, uh, Revenue Public Hearing, 2023 Property Tax Rate as Required by RCW, 84.55.120. Uh, Steve Grum, our Finance Director, will, uh, start us off with a staff report.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council and taxpayers. This is a, uh, this is to open the, uh, the, the hearing for the property tax levy. The, the 2023 tax levy is anticipated to increase by 154,000, so we have a responsibility to be, to be very clear, very transparent, and, uh, I have a pretty good, uh, very short presentation to explain. The answer is that most people want to know, how much does the levy increase? What's the change in the tax rate? How will the assessed value affect my property tax bill? And how does the city budget affect my property taxes? That's what our taxpayers would like to know, isn't it? I start with last year. This is just the factual history, last year's, uh, assessed value of the entire property in the City of Federal Way was $14 billion, and the levy was 11.6 million, and the tax rate is simply the result of a little bit of math, dividing one with the other. The rate per thousand of assessed value was 81 cents. Now, this year, the, uh, King County Tax Assessor has given us some new information. We now have, the new assessed value has gone up to 17 billion, and that's a result of some new construction, 46 million, and the, and then I do, I just simple math, plug in the difference for the existing, uh, uh, property, how much it increased in value. Now, to get to this year's levy, we can only, uh, increase the levy, uh, by 1% on existing property. So on 11.6 million of the levy, the levy's going to go up 116,000. Now, I know some of you are sitting there saying, 2.7 million on 14, that's a lot more than 1%, and it is. The value in the city increased 19.2%, and we have heard from some of our property owners saying that they've gotten their new assessed values, and they're very concerned about their taxes. Well, I can tell you that that has got absolutely nothing to do with the 116,000. There is no formula. The value could have gone up 10 million, it could have gone up 2 million, whatever. The cap is still 1%. Now, new construction is a different matter. New construction, that gets to be added to the rolls at the existing rate, 81 cents per thousand, and so the new construction in the city, well, this last year, is going to increase our tax levy by about 37,000. So the total of the new tax, uh, levy is going to be about 11.7, and that means that the rate that results from the new value and the new levy, the tax rate is going to go down. It's going to go down from 81 cents per thousand, it's going to, to 68 cents per thousand. If you get questions, uh, this is, you know, in one page, I, I can explain the entire tax, uh, property taxation of the City of Federal Way, you can point them to this video, but the answers to the questions, how much does the levy increase, and what's the change in the tax rate, that was pretty simple. Now, how does it affect each individual's property tax bill? I would like to show you a simple example. In a hypothetical city that has, if we, if, if our total budget was $1,000, if we needed to levy $1,000, and we only had four houses in the city, their assessed value was all the same, they would each have 25% of the total city's value, the levy rate would be 83 cents, and they would each pay $250. That would get us our budget of $1,000. Awfully simple. What happens if we double their assessed value? If the assessed value goes up, uh, if it doubles, the levy rate drops in half, and they still pay the exact same, uh, uh, amount of property tax. And what this shows is that the assessed value has got very little to do with how much people pay in property tax. Now, we know that everybody's house isn't worth the same, so I'll show you another example where we've got a little bit of a difference, 200,000, 300, 300, and 400. In this case, the county assessor would still apply a uniform, uh, tax rate to each house, so that the, uh, the, uh, house that's worth less would pay a little bit less, and the house that's worth more is a little bit more, and it still ends up funding the same exact levy. Now, if you take that example and you increase the assessed values by 50%, but you increase the levy by 10%, we're going to go from 1,000 in our budget to 1,010. Well, not the budget, the, the amount that we're able to levy. Uh, you can increase the assessed value by 50%, the taxes still only go up 1%. It's very small. So the answer to how much do, uh, do people pay on their property tax bill, it has to do with the amount that we're, that the levy goes up. In Washington State, we have a capped levy at 1%. Uh, so the assessed value has little to do with the increase in property tax. The increase in levy is what raises the property tax, and that's going to be the lesser of inflation or 1%. And the city's budget has little to do with it, because our budget goes up quite a bit more than 1% every year. Now, uh, some of you are familiar that there's a term called the Implicit Price Deflator, and that's just a federal index on inflation. We cannot charge more than 1%, but if the inflation is below 1%, then we have to look at the Implicit Price Deflator. That's not the case this year. This year, they're telling us that inflation came in at 6.4%, so therefore the city can levy the full 1%. In times of lower, uh, inflation, we would be exploring this a little bit further, but we don't have to this year. Another thing I would love to share with you, just because you need to know all the facts about the city, how much property tax revenue does the city budget forego because of the 1% cap? Uh, there is a lid on the levy, and the answer is 15.6 million, and it's really simple how we get to that. Last year, we had $14 billion in assessed value, we had an 81 cent tax rate, our levy was 11.6. In 2023, as you saw, the rate's going to go down, the assessed value went up, and we're going to be levying 11.7. Now, the cap, the cap's a dollar 60, and on a, and when our assessed value went up 19 and 1/2% to $17 billion, i- i- in theory, if we were to go to the voters and ask to if they wanted additional services that would be paid for by that, the additional, uh, amount, uh, would be the difference between that 27 million, and that would be 15.6 million. So that's just the difference that we are foregoing in, that we are unable to assess in levy. Now, how do we still balance our budget? Uh, as, as you know, uh, oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, so, so the, so the proposed levy is going to increase 154,000, that's 1.32%, and the tax rate is going to decrease by 12, 12 cents. You saw that our sales tax increased by 1.8, uh, I'm sorry, 1, 1, 1, 1.2 million. Uh, that helped fund a lot of things in our budget, and we also started investing our, uh, the cash on our reserves, that was another 1.8 million. Compared to how much our proposed levy in property tax i- is increasing, 154,000, you can see that we are absorbing a lot of increased costs in our budget, very little of it is coming from the, uh, property tax. The property tax is, is, is going to go up 154,000, and that's really due to the increased, uh, assessed value that supports a 1% increase, plus the amount of new construction. Uh, on the overlapping taxes, the city, uh, pay, uh, appears on everybody's tax bill along with the Federal Way. School District, the County, the State, and the Fire District, the city is 8%. Our portion, our 8% is going to go up 1.3%, 154,000, that's our piece of the property tax bill, but let people know that there are other taxing agencies that we don't have any control over. That is my tutorial for the every, for the average taxpayer. I'm, uh, I think the next thing is to ask for hearing, public input, and as always, send all, send all the, all your questions to Finance.
Councilmember Walsh?
Just a, a quick question. With the other, um, other entities, the, the County, the Fire District, things like that, are they limited by that 1% levy, uh, lid as well, or is it just the city?
I don't know the answer strongly enough to be able to give you a definitive answer. I don't.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Sephedoson?
Yeah, for, for better understanding, how does the 1% levy lid impact the other taxing districts? Or does it?
I'm, I'm only focusing on the cities, on, on, on the taxation that the city is subject, subject to. I don't, I, I don't think I fully understand the cities and the, or the counties and the states and the other districts.
Thank you.
All right.
Happy to phone a friend if anybody else knows.
Stephanie, is there any public comment?
I don't have anybody signed up, Mayor, and I don't have any hands online.
All right, uh, Council, uh, Council President, Coach Mark?
Um, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, closing?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. Uh, I will now open the public meeting on, uh, Item B, the Preliminary 2023-24 Biennial Budget Hearing, as required by RCW 35A, .34.090. Uh, Steve Grum will do a staff report.
Thank you. I need to share. The purpose of this, of course, is to, uh, provide a little bit of information to review prior to asking for, uh, any, any, uh, public comment. Uh, the, the city has, uh, conducted a, an extensive process for preparing the 2023-24 budget. This is the timeline. We have had several, uh, workshops and study sessions, and we are now at the point where we are asking for public, uh, input, the first of two. This, this is the first of two hearings that we will be having on the budget. The next one will be on November 1st, and then we would be looking to adopt the budget on November 15th. We started with the Mayor's Proposed Budget, which we filed, uh, back in September. We have had several study sessions and some discussions, and we have taken both of, uh, both of those now and prepared what we, what we will put on the website for the city, uh, as the, the proposed adopted budget. Uh, in the Mayor's Proposed Budget, we had a 3 and 1/2% cost of living increase, we added 13 police officers and three support staff, which were not in the previous bienniums budget. We've added some replacement, uh, cost for vehicle replacement, we've absorbed some insurance cost increase, and we've absorbed a jail cost increase. These are the, uh, biggest items, and in the last few study sessions, the items that we talked about adding were the neighborhood traffic safety costs, the public, I'm, I'm sorry, the police officer wellness, a new shopping cart program, which would give the city, uh, which would give the mayor and staff, uh, some funds to address, uh, that situation, also the safety issues concerning school zones, we've added some council travel and admin support, and some printing for senior commission. That brings us to a budget which has total expenses. In 2023, the total expenses that we would be authorizing are 155 million. The following year would be higher, because that's where we have the, uh, construction cost for the operations maintenance shop. Uh, the total staff that we would be having in the adopted budget would be 397, full-time equivalents. As I discussed earlier, the property tax will be dropping to 69 cents per thousand, and the city's, uh, property tax is 8% of the total of all the residents. When we look at the city budget, we have to allocate revenues that are coming in from taxpayers, and whether that's the general fund or other funds, the revenues coming in, we have to make policy decisions on whether that's going to go to service delivery, or whether we're going to take care of long-term infrastructure, and then we have to take care of the reserves across the entire city. I think this picture is a lot easier to understand than this one, but this is going to be the exhibit that shows fund by fund, what expenditures we will be forecasting revenue to cover the expenses. In the blue outlined areas, fund by fund, those are the expenditures that we would be authorizing for the next biennium. And the numbers in the red, uh, boxes, those are the, uh, fund balance policy limits that we are going to make sure that we, uh, take care of the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city, making sure that every single fund has got the, uh, reserves that we, uh, have adopted by policy to make sure that this city is, um, strong for the long term. With that, I, uh, just remind you all that we all have a balanced budget, we have met our reserve requirements, we are prioritizing both services and infrastructure, and with that, I will stop, because we have been through enough, uh, study sessions, I know, but I'm always here for questions.
All right, any questions for Steve? Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, that, uh, last chart that you showed us, is it in, in this book that you gave us?
It is.
If so, what page?
The, the, the chart with the, uh, fund balances and the expenditures?
Yes, uh-huh.
It absolutely is. Uh, there is?
Page 23, page 23, 24.
It's on page 22, 23, 24 separately, but on page 18 is where the ordinance begins, and the Exhibit A is on page 21. That's the exact page I showed you on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, any other questions? Councilmember Sephedoson?
Thank you for telling us where Exhibit A is, be- because I was looking for it in the back earlier and couldn't find it, so I just.
We've complicated your life with a larger, new, and improved expanded budget, and we can all help each other find everything. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I was actually looking for exhibits in the back, and so I'm glad they're, to know that they're embedded in the, in the actual text. Thank you.
Very good. All right, uh, Stephanie, do we have any public comment?
I don't have anybody signed up, Mayor, and I don't have any hands online, so no.
All right, Council President, Coach Mark?
I move to continue the 2023-24 Biennial Budget Hearing to November 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, uh, now, Item 9, Council Business, Approval of the Coreless Settlement, uh, Coreless Litigation Settlement. Kent Van Alstine's Assistant City Attorney. Kent?
All right, I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed Plant 2 LLC, or as I'll refer to it, the Coreless Litigation Resolution. The policy question? The policy question here before you is, should the city council agree to waive half of the accrued fines for permit violations in exchange for resolution of the pending litigation? So a little bit of background here on the underlying violation, and then also the subsequent litigation to this point. In late two thousand twenty, the city issued a notice of violation to Corliss for surface water permitting violations related to unpermitted paving of approximately fifteen thousand square feet of the property that's located at three five zero five three sixteenth Ave. South here in the city. That notice of violation that was issued by the city was appealed by Corliss, and the city hearing examiner largely upheld the notice of violation, but required Corliss to either remove the pain, the paving, or submit required applications to the city to permit the paving within thirty days of that order. Corliss appealed that decision to Superior Court, where the litigation is now, continues to be pending. In early January two thousand twenty-two, sometime later, Corliss removed the contested paving and came into compliance with the hearing examiner's order. However, the city would issue daily fines from the date of noncompliance with the hearing examiner's order to the date of removal, which totaled at that point one hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred. As I mentioned before, the appeal is still pending. Very basically, these are the, this is the proposed agreement. One, as I've already mentioned, the property has been brought into compliance with respect to the violation. Two, Corliss will pay fifty percent of the total accrued fine, which equals sixty-seven thousand three hundred. The remainder of the accrued fines will be waived, and Corliss agrees to dismiss their appeal in Superior Courts. The litigation will be ended. Alternatives before you are to authorize approval and execution of the proposed settlement, or do not authorize such approval and execution, and the mayor's recommendation is option one. And I'm open for questions.
All right. Counsel, any questions? All right. Council President Coachmore?
I move approval of the Corliss litigation settlement.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you, Kent. All right. Next, modifying the city's regulation of shopping carts. Go ahead.
Good evening again. You'd think after I'd done it correctly the first time, I would be likely to do it correctly the second time, but I did not. All right. So this topic that I'm here to discuss is a topic that was forwarded from Parks Committee as a discussion-only item here at council. This has to do with proposed changes to city shopping cart regulation in the city, and we have a, an ordinance, a draft ordinance that has been prepared, which makes some changes to that regulation. A number of the council members and the mayor were not present at that, at that, at that committee meeting, and therefore, I'm going to go into some of the same background that I've already stated, so for some of you, this may be very repetitive, but I think it's important to go into the background to understand the issues and to understand what the ordinance seeks to achieve here. So the overall policy question is, should the city amend the federal way revised codes currently existing regulation of shopping carts? So I'm now going to go into the background and explain the currently existing regulation of shopping carts in the city of Federal Way, starting with civil regulation as opposed to criminal regulations. So we'll start on the civil side. So back in two thousand eighteen, the city first passed an ordinance that established regulations that apply to abandoned shopping carts in the city. In other words, shopping carts that are not in somebody's possession, there is nobody standing next to the cart or exercising control over the cart. As part of that ordinance, all shopping carts in the city are required. It's not an option. There's a requirement to have compliant identification signs in accordance with state law. And a visual aid that I did not bring out last time is an example of a potentially compliant identification sign that might be compliant with state law. That would be, again, compliant with both the state law and, and the city ordinance. There's also an impoundment program for abandoned shopping carts that applies anywhere in the city. In other words, abandoned shopping carts, regardless of whether they're on public or private property within this, within the city, may be impounded. Private property owners are, are requested permission, or we request permission from private property owners to do so. These impound fees are charged to the cart owners, by which I mean the retail cart owners. In other words, if it's a Target cart, that cart owner is target in that situation. However, there's a fee deferral program, which provides an incentive to retailers that makes it so that the first three carts per month from any one retailer that are impounded, that impound fee is deferred, but only if the retail owner has established security measures to prevent removal from the premises. And this is, there are several options of what those security measures might be. Some examples are locking wheels, requiring all carts to be locked inside the store at night, onsite security to ensure the shopping carts remain on premises. There are a couple other options as well. So now jumping to criminal enforcement or criminal regulation of shopping carts in the city currently. So currently, city code has adopted the misdemeanor offense of shopping cart theft that's in state law under the citation that you can see there in your, in your packets and on the screen. Under state law, and similarly under currently existing city code, the maximum penalty for shopping cart theft is up to a thousand dollar fine and up to ninety days in jail. This is really the key part here to understanding what the criminal regulation does and does not do, and that's that only unauthorized removal or possession of shopping carts, where the shopping cart has one of these legally compliant signs on it, only that constitutes a crime. If somebody takes a shopping cart off the premises and the shopping cart does not have one of these signs on it, they are not guilty of shopping cart theft. Shopping cart theft is enforced through the police department, and of course, the determination of guilt and, and the levying of fines and associated potential jail time occurs through the municipal court system. So that was all currently existing. Now we're going to move on to the proposed code changes and what it, what it would change, what it seeks to change. Number one, this is the, the, the largest change. It makes just possession of a cart, shopping cart in a city right-of-way, regardless of whether that cart has one of these compliance signs on it, it makes it a class-three civil infraction, and specifically makes the cart subject to seizure, i.e., impoundment. And I want to be clear about this. This is an infraction, i.e., it's a civil enforcement measure. It is not a criminal enforcement measure. An infraction is, is, is civil. However, it would specifically make this cart subject to seizure and impoundment under the, the impoundment program, which brings, brings me to number two. The proposed code changes would expand the currently existing impound program so that it would cover not only impounds of abandoned shopping carts, but it would also cover seizures of stolen shopping carts, i.e., carts that were, taking of carts that constituted shopping cart theft, the crime, as well as any shopping carts that are illegally in the right-of-way under, under, under number one here. The proposed changes would also change the, the mechanism by, which, the mechanism designed to make retailers keep their sign, keep their carts on the premises. In other words, it would change the carrot for the, for the retailers. Instead of, under current, where it would, where it exempts all carts, just the first three carts, excuse me, per month, and only when the retailer has adopted security measures, the proposed changes would make it so that any cart that has one of these legally sufficient identification signs is exempt from impound and seizure fees, and it would not, there would be no cap to that. So it's not capped to just the first three per month that are found. Any number of carts found from the retailer would be exempt from the fee so long as they have the proper legal signage on them. Four, the ordinance would specifically require the city to develop procedures for treatment and storage of personal property in seized shopping carts. This is, the, the details of specific treatment and storage of, of personal property in a shopping cart is not something that should go in the ordinance text itself. It's a highly situationally specific as to what the correct process and what, what legal rules might apply to, apply to such a, such a situation. So that's not in this ordinance, but the ordinance does specifically require the city to develop those procedures in the future, and prior to enforcement of the ordinance. And then lastly, this, this ordinance would make shopping cart theft a standalone provision in the criminal code as opposed to one of many that's adopted in a, in a list. It would place it similar to graffiti crimes, which are currently explicitly called out in code separately from a number of other crimes, which are just directly imported. And so I, I said most of this on the last slides, so I'll go through quickly with these slides, but I think it's useful, and perhaps when we're discussing this, I can come back to the slide so we can see an easy comparison between current and proposed. But these, on the, on the left in the red, we have the current regulation. On the right, we have the proposed regulation. Abandoned shopping carts anywhere in the city currently are subject to impoundment. That is also true with the proposed regulations. Possessed shopping carts on right-of-way are not currently regulated unless they fit the crime under state law. Under the proposed regulations, possessed shopping carts on right-of-way would be a civil infraction, subject to seizure and impoundment, regardless of the signage. And then the third category, stolen shopping carts anywhere in the city, is a misdemeanor both currently and under proposed. The proposed would specifically subject that cart to seizure and with the current, as part of the current impoundment program. As to the incentives, which we've discussed, the incentives for the, for the retailers, the current incentive in red, no fee for the first three carts per month attributable to the retailer if they've implemented security measures. Proposed incentives, no fee for any cart impounded if the cart has legally compliant signage. And I also should mention this, there was also a proposal to double the impound fee, to double the impound fee for all carts that are not exempt because they have the correct signage. That, as we discussed at the previous council or committee meeting, that's something that would appropriately be done with the fee schedule amendment. The fee schedule amendment is coming up, or our annual fee schedule amendment usually happens at the beginning of December, end of November, beginning of December for each year. That's when that should happen, assuming that council agrees with, with that proposal. We also discussed alternative incentives that are not currently in the draft ordinance, but it was something that we discussed at committee, which I wanted to mention. An alternative, again, not currently in the draft ordinance, was to have the fee for an impounded cart waived, but only if it both had the legally compliant signage as well as the implemented security measures. Again, that's not in the ordinance as currently contemplated, but that was a subject of, of discussion, which I wanted to highlight. So ultimate alternatives here are to adopt the proposed ordinance. We're not here, of course, today to adopt the proposed ordinance. We're here for discussion only. So the mayor's recommendation at this point is to forward the proposed ordinance to first reading at the next council meeting after we've had discussion on it today. And I'm open for any questions.
That's Mr. Walsh.
First, I would like to thank you for the work that you have put into drafting the, the ordinance. I think that it was done very well, and I appreciate the work and effort on that.
Thank you.
Counsel President?
I, I'm wondering, are we going to notify the grocery stores or the retailers that this is a change? Are we going to send them a letter or let them know that there's going to be, I mean, we hate to have them be surprised.
Well, we'd need to.
Yeah, and at this point, I, I should have mentioned at the end that, that Brian and members of, members of the police department, as well as the community development department, are available for more of the, those operational questions. So I should have mentioned that, Brian, if you.
Yeah, as far as notice goes, we can, whatever changes we make, we can notify them.
Yeah, we'll need to. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Kent, for the presentation. And does this mean with the new proposal, you didn't talk, you didn't say anything about the, the fees for people who have the carts?
Are you referring to the, the fee for the civil infraction of possessing it on the sidewalk? A class-three civil infraction under state law is a fifty-dollar ticket. So that would be the amount of the ticket that would be issued to somebody who was in possession of a shopping cart on a city right-of-way.
Okay. And no jail time?
No, no, because it is a, again, it's a civil offense, not a, not a criminal offense.
Okay. That's much better than the, than the former one. So if they don't have any proper signage and those carts are impounded, how do we know who they belong to anyway?
Yeah, so the, the legally compliant signage is not the only way that you can determine where a cart comes from. For instance, so this is a Safeway sign, but frequently, this won't be the only thing on a cart that identifies it as a Safeway cart. There's also, you know, a Safeway symbol on the, on the side of the cart itself, or in the, in the case of a Target cart, there's a giant bullseye on it that symbolizes Target or one of those other retailers. In other words, this legally compliant signage that contains all the particulars of shopping cart theft and saying you don't, you, you can't take it off the premises and saying who to call if you find one off the premises, that's not the only means by which we can identify carts. And I defer to Scott and/or Brian on that, but I think most carts in the city are pretty readily identifiable, despite the fact that virtually no carts in the city currently have the legally compliant signage.
So my last question. I, I believe we're still not, I don't know if stores have a stake in this to us, even with the new, the old and the new, and especially with the new, if there's no fee whenever their carts are taken and they just can go and get them out, then I feel like they're getting away with something. I think they're still, they should be held responsible, so taking other measures so that their carts are not removed from their property, and I don't know what that is, because I know I've been told that even when they have those wheels, people can take them, and I don't know that, but I feel like they should have a stake in this, and at least if there's some kind of penalty, rather than making it no fee whatsoever, if it's hap, if it happens hundredth time, we just let them take them. I feel like we're, we're not giving them the opportunity to take ownership of, of their part in this problem. So hopefully, we can consider that as well. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Duff?
The question is, you know, it goes through first reading, second reading. Let's assume the council passes this. When would it actually start in being enforced? What's the timeline? Is it January two thousand twenty-three, since we're at the end of the year, or which, which?
So as a legal matter, it would be enforceable as soon as it was on the books.
Right.
As to the practical question about, about when we would have finalized the necessary policies and implementation, that's not a question that I know the answer to directly. I'm not sure if Brian Scott or, or the chief have thoughts on that.
Yeah, so we would, on the books, we need to put together the, the resources and personnel to begin enforcing it right away.
So, so really, realistically, it would start enforcement to be sometime in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
Technically, it's on the books, so we do need to enforce it. When we have the resources in place is another question, which is why we budgeted, you know, a quarter of a million dollars to.
Okay.
Prepare for this.
Okay. Thank you. That's Mr. Walsh.
Yes, in, in response to, to Councilmember Sephardoson's question about shouldn't the, the store have more skin in the game? I mean, if the store is, is, has the correct placard or, or information, I, I don't know what the best word for that is, I guess.
Legally compliant signage.
Legally compliant signage. Legal compliant signage. I mean, the store is, is doing its part. It's the property of the store. You know, as, as I see it, it's kind of like saying, you know, wow, I mean, why didn't that person have their car stolen, have it in the garage, instead of having it out where somebody could steal it? I mean, hey, it, it was stolen. The, the, the person who stole it is responsible for the theft, not the person from whom it was stolen. And so, you know, I, I think, and with this proposed ordinance, we are incentivizing the store to have that proper, the, 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 the proper, what did you say the right of word was?
Legally compliant signage.
Legally compliant signage on the cart, and we're waiving the fee if they do that, but if they don't, hey, we're actually increasing the, the fee. So it does put more skin in the game for the store.
May I ask a question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. Councilmember Trent?
Oh, go ahead. So the only reason that we want signage is so we could penalize those businesses that don't have signage. And one thing I'd like to consider is if they don't have it, maybe they don't, they can't even.
can't even afford to have signage, properly, legally appropriate signage, because maybe they can't afford it. So that's one issue we need to consider, because the big companies can do it. And secondly, yes, your point is valid, but I still take, I have responsibility to protect my property. And I think if I'm not protecting my property, and I'm not condoning the person who stole my stuff, but I think one extra measure to make sure that their items are not taken from their yard could be something that they could do over and above what we're asking them to do, just putting signage properly, legally, I don't know, you have two steps there. And so I'm just saying, I think, again, if they have skin in the game, there's more to it than it being readily available, number one. But again, I'm also concerned about businesses that cannot afford to do what we're asking them to do. So, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Tran. I'm sorry, actually, Kim, so Walsh, did you have?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, go ahead, Councilmember Tran.
I can wait. Ken, thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is the fiscal impact. So if we are going to make it easier for the retailer not to pay the impound fee like they are currently paying us right now, so that could be a fiscal impact. The second thing I'm worried is if we are going to pass this, our law enforcement will have the right to stop somebody and taking their stuff, and then we have to store those stuff somewhere, that is a cost, or somebody need to monitor that to do the inventory. So that's another cost that we have to carry. So my first concern is the fiscal impact. The second thing is I am concerned that with this ordinance, we are targeting the most vulnerable people in the community, the homeless people. A mother with a small child don't have any other way to transport their goods from the store or from one place to another except that shopping cart. It could be an elderly person, it could be a veteran person that don't have the means to transport their goods from one place to another. Are we penalize those people? I'm just asking the questions, and those are my concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council, excuse me, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So at the committee meeting last week, was it last week? It's been a long week. We had quite good discussions. So if people who are watching this and are interested, you might want to tune into the parks committee meeting of last Tuesday, starting at 5:00, and listen to what we discussed. So this ordinance would allow the city to have a police officer stop someone who had a shopping cart on the city's right-of-way. That person would have the cart taken away. This is how I understand it from our discussion. Then the police officer would call another staff person, which is the shopping cart person who picks up shopping carts, because we already have two people in the city that do that. And they would come, and they'd have to go through the shopping cart and decide what needs to be saved and what needs to be stored. So my question is, what kind of training are these folks going to get? Because the law is, you know, the law says that we can't just seize people's property without giving them the right to due process. What kind of training are they going to get? Is this ordinance only going to be a Monday through Friday ordinance? Because the shopping cart folks only work Monday through Friday during the daytimes. So will the shopping cart people be on call seven days a week, 24 hours a day? If so, what would that cost? How are we going to protect the staff? How are we going to teach them not only what to save, what not to save, but how to keep themselves safe from being poked or bitten or injured by something that's in the shopping cart? I've seen animals in those carts, I've seen things I wouldn't want to touch. And so that's a big concern of mine. So do you have any answers to that?
I guess I could answer perhaps the training question. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. What I would suggest is that those are very, very good questions, and we should compile a list of answers for you, since this is an ongoing discussion. What I can tell you briefly is that, yes, it will require some training, and I assume you're talking about the, not the police, but the code enforcers that are going to be.
Right.
Yes. So they most definitely would need some training as far as storing and cataloging items. And if they, yeah, like to your point, going through items, if there's dangerous materials and protection equipment that they need, there's a number of things that would need to be put in place before we actually have non-police assist with the matter.
And can I clarify something also? Nothing about this ordinance authorizes us to seize personal property from someone that hasn't committed a crime. So our first preference is always going to be have them take their stuff out of the cart and us take the cart away. And hopefully, that will solve some of these problems, but if they're incapable of carrying everything that's in the cart or taking possession of it immediately, we can't just leave it in the right-of-way. So that's when we'd have to safeguard it. So I think this falls in the category of those logistical concerns that we talked about, we didn't want to codify in the ordinance, but I could understand if council wants to have some sort of policy or in plan that's not in the ordinance, but at least you know what our plan is before passing an ordinance. But we don't have that prepared right now.
Yeah, I would like to know what the plan is. We talked about that at the committee meeting, that the ordinance is coming before the, how the city's going to react to this. And so I think, at least for me, I would like to know how this city will be responding to this ordinance, because I don't want another ordinance on the books that looks nice. I mean, it looks like we're doing something, but we're not really doing something. I want it, if we're going to do something, I want to do it. I don't want to just have the ordinance there and us not. The other thing is, and I brought this up last week, at Amazon Fresh, they actually, on their closing policies, the first policy, when they are going to close the store at 10:00 at night, at 9:45, they make sure that no one else comes in and takes a cart to go shopping. At 10:00, when they close the store, they go outside, it says right on their policy, because I read it, all the carts are to come inside the store. And that's ensuring that the carts aren't being taken during the nighttime. So I would like to see if perhaps we can put something like that into the ordinance, that stores need to have a secure place where the carts go when the store is not open. Because that helps the store keep their property, and it keeps the carts from being removed from their property. Thank you.
Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I think we have some, I wasn't at the meeting, but I've heard a lot of discussion, and we've had a lot of great discussion here at the dais. But I think we've got to remember, we've just allocated a quarter million dollars in our budget for this program. I mean, if the budget passes, it's, there's a quarter million dollars sitting there to enforce shopping cart seizure or enforcing the law. And if, we've had for the last nine months, what is it, October now, 10 months since I've been elected, we've had people here every day, or every council member, every other council member, talking about the need to control, not the person that's taking the shopping cart to the bus, because she's an elderly lady to get to home, but the people that are traveling up and down our streets, that have pallets in those shopping carts and have who knows whatever else, or the guys who are walking out of Target full of shopping carts, full of stuff that they shouldn't be taking, and then they walk off. But I really believe that it's important for us to make a stand, to say, we're tired of this behavior in federal way. You know, we're going to have a staff, a legal department, a police department, they're going to figure it out, it's going to happen in 2023. But if we don't vote to move forward, then we've been discussing things for 10 months and haven't made a darn step forward to do anything. And then we're going to hear it again for the next 10 months, and the next 10 months after that, and I think we're letting down our citizens. This is a golden opportunity to give our staff the ability, and thank you to Councilmember Walsh for writing through this, and everybody else that's given input. But we need to just take a stand and say, not in federal way anymore, and then work it out. We got the money in the budget, and make it something that we can all be proud of in federal way, and say, hey, we're tired of this BS. We need to take a stand, our citizens have all told us, and it's not just stand-up, it's everybody in federal way is concerned. So it's time that we move it on. So that's all I have to say.
Deputy Mayor and then the Councilmember Sephardosson.
What I'm saying, Councilmember Doby, is before I vote on this ordinance, I want to know how the staff is going, what, how they're going to do this. Because not only do we need to train the shopping cart pickup people, what do you call them? What's their?
Maybe you need to vote no then.
Code compliance.
Maybe you need to vote.
Well, there's code officers, and then there's the shopping cart people. But not only do they need to be trained, but perhaps they need a pay raise, because this is hazardous work going through these shopping carts. So I want to protect their health, and I want to make sure that they know what they're doing. I also don't want this just to be something that's only enforced a short time, you know, Monday through Friday. If it's going to be an ordinance on the books, it needs to be seven days a week, you know? So I just want to know the policies or the procedures that the city will be going through and to make sure that it fits what the council thinks is happening.
Okay. Councilmember Sephardosson.
Yeah, and my point also is, I think there are a lot of questions that are not answered. And so I totally agree with Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Hong also asked questions around funding and fiscal responsibility. And I also want to know, I think someone brought up about storage, storing the belongings of the people who have the carts. The reason they have those carts really is because there's no other way of carrying their stuff. This is all they have, and this is their belonging. And so then, you know, I've made this comment before, maybe we need to provide them with something to carry their belongings in, because you can't just let them dump it there. That's another issue right there, if they leave their belongings on the street. So there are questions that are not answered, so it's a matter of addressing all these and making sure that we know what's going on before we vote. And I really still believe it's either going to impact small businesses that do not have the funds to take, to get the proper signage. So now they're being penalized, and then also the people who are taking the carts are also being penalized. So I think from all front, I think the question here is, what is, how are we moving forward? And how are we implementing these laws or the ordinance? Because it's a question that we need answered before we can vote on it. I think that's all we're saying. So there's a lot of unanswered questions from at least three of us here. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Brian, before I turn over to Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Tran? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do have a.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So in addition to the concern that I have earlier regarding the fiscal impact, the other concern that I have is, right now, our police department is pretty much, I mean, overloaded, right, with everything going on in the city. So if we pass this, how is this going to impact their department and how they do their work? This is another, obviously, additional work for our officers. So that's another thing that I would like to know before we vote on this.
All right. I've got a couple of thoughts here. I want to make sure what we're doing is productive. Brian, there's been a, right now, this is not up for first reading. This is up for whether it would be put on for the next council meeting for first reading. The substantive questions that have been asked by the deputy mayor and the other council members, could you have an answer by the time second reading was done or not?
As far as the operations go?
Yes.
I think, this is how I would answer that question, is you've given us, if it passes, that is policy that we now have. My concerns are budgetary, which, if the budget passes, you've given us the budget. With those two in place, we'll figure out the operations. I don't know if I'll have an answer for you at the next meeting, but if you have policy and budget, we will implement it. And we have had a legal review that says what we're proposing is legal. So with all those things in place, we can figure out the implementation.
How would the money be used that's been budgeted?
We'd need additional staff, field staff person, we would need a truck and a trailer, and then if there's any outreach, you know, if we wanted to help some of the smaller stores with their, because the big stores will be fine, if we wanted to do some outreach with the smaller stores to help their signage, we could do that as well.
And my understanding is, this would not be, and Chief, if you could weigh in, this would not be frontline officers that are on duty, per se, responding to 911 calls. These would be SOU, Special Operations Unit officers, is that correct?
Right. The primary responsibility for enforcing this particular ordinance would fall under our Special Operations Unit. We have five officers assigned to this particular unit, and they work quite a bit with the homeless population, they know all the resources that are available for them, and work with social workers. So I would task this particular, working with code enforcement and others with the special unit. So it would not be, generally speaking, won't be patrol officers assigned to responding to 911 calls.
All right. Councilmember Walsh, do you have a motion?
Question.
Go ahead, go ahead. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Sephardosson.
So if the folks who are going through the cart, so let's say that the cart's being taken, the person had, from what I understand from the committee meeting, we can't give them a plastic bag to carry their belongings?
No, that's not what I, or, sorry, that's not my memory of the committee meeting. What I, what I believe I said at the committee meeting was, we should not write into our code a requirement that we give them a bag that they put their belongings in, because many things don't fit in bags, i.e. mattresses, you know, any number of things. So it doesn't account for the specifics. But there's nothing to prevent us from giving them a bag for some personal belongings.
Good, that's good, because then they, I would be really concerned that if it's something that the staff person going through the cart deciding what is to be stored and what is to be thrown away, we could be creating another problem with a lot of trash around. And I would wonder if, when you're coming up with policies for staff to do this, if there is anything that is left that isn't going to be stored, if it could be picked up by the same employee and taken and dumped, so that we don't have to wait for another employee, you know, the other group that comes and picks up trash to come and get it? So that we don't have, and we're not creating more problems than we're trying to help.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Sephardosson.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Walsh?
I just wanted to make a.
Can I? Let's go to Councilmember Doby.
I really like Lydia's idea there about having something other than a bag that people could take their belongings in. You know, those are some things we should think about, if there's, it's a suitcase with wheels or something, you know? So we're not trying to take anything away from people, we're trying to clean our streets up and make sure that people aren't stealing shopping carts and we're not wheeling around with all sorts of things. So I think that's a great idea for the staff to come back and say, hey, there's how we would do that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, I was just going to make a few comments here. First, Councilmember Tran was concerned about the fiscal impact. I think that in the end, in a fairly short amount of time, it would actually reduce the fiscal impact on the, have a positive fiscal impact, because as we begin to do this, I think that there will be less shopping carts stolen. And so there will be less. this, I think that there will be less shopping cart stolen, and so there will be less need. It won't be an immediate effect, but if the, if the, the population that we're talking about understands that, that, hey, if they take a shopping cart, it's going to, and they're pushing down the street, it's going to be taken back, then in time, it can help reduce the amount of shopping cart theft, thus reducing the amount of times that we're having to take the, to seize the shopping carts. And so it can have a positive fiscal impact in, in the long run. Secondly, Deputy Mayor Honda was concerned about the, the, you know, the, the carts at night, you know, saying that the, you know, the Amazon Fresh store is, one of their closing policies is bring the carts in. I, I think that that's what all of them should be doing. If the, if the other council members think it would be best, Ken, could, could you show that last slide again, the one that, that showed the, the option, so the one before that? Okay, here, no fee for any cart impounded if cart has both legally compliant signage and retailer has implemented security measures. One of those security measures could be securing the cart at night. And so that could be, you know, we, we could do it where it's both, rather than, than just the legal signage. And so I think that that should, can, can address that. And as, as Brian Davis said, you know, part of the funds could help the small stores with the signage as well. And so I think that, that those concerns are, are covered. And, and I have confidence that the city staff can work out a, a policy that, that will, that will indeed work and be, be fair and, and, and able to be enforced. And so with that, I would like to, I move that, that the, that we move this to our next meeting for first reading.
Second. There's been a motion, a second?
Mayor, can I clarify the motion? Because there was a discussion right before the motion about adding something that's not currently in the ordinance, which is the added incentive. So is your intent to forward it with that language?
Forward it with that language, yes.
With that language?
With, with the language of, of.
Signage plus.
Signage plus implementing security measures in order for the, the fee to be waived.
Okay. And there was a second?
I still second it.
Okay. So there's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Should the security measures actually be listed, so the stores know what it is that the council has, has thought about? You know, so in, so our staff person, Amy, did some research for us, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, nine cities in Washington that she researched for us, or that she found that have shopping cart ordinances. And many of them are very similar, but they talk about security measures, and nowhere on the security measures that are listed for the cities do they talk about putting the, the carts away secure at night. So perhaps we need to be specific about that.
If I could address that just partially, I don't have the code in front of me, so I don't know if that specific security measure is one of the ones that's currently enumerated in code. I do know that there are five current options for security measures that are enumerated in code, which include, one of them is self-locking wheels on the carts, the overhead.
Poles.
Poles, perhaps you're looking at it, in which case you know the five better than I do at this point, but we could add things to that list as part of the ordinance, as well, as well. Other things that would be security.
That, that's why I ask, because it's securing carts, when the store is closed, it's not listed as a security measure.
And Council President, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, my understanding of the direction was to add that language, and so we would add that as one of the options for security measures. We try to have the list be somewhat flexible, because not one answer isn't going to solve the problem for every store. Some stores don't have the physical capacity to put their carts inside the building. So if it is acceptable, that would be what we would do. We'd modify the language to add to that list of already the stuff we have, also similar to Amazon Fresh, securing your carts at night, a policy to have employees ensure that the carts are inside the building before the store closes.
Okay.
Or, or it could be secured with, with.
A chain.
With the chain, or something outside the building as well.
Is there any other discussion?
So we can ha, get these ans, answers to these questions before the next reading, then?
So this is on for a motion to forward this, for an ordinance vote at the next meeting. So we would come back with an ordinance with these options written into it. If council doesn't like it at first reading, we have one more chance to change it before second reading.
All right. And there's going to be at first reading a presentation on some of these issues in regard to the program, its details, and implementation?
Yeah, we can, we can put something together.
Very good. Okay. All right. There's been a motion, there's been a second, and a discussion. All those in favor of moving this on to the next full city council meeting of the city council for first reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's unanimous. All right. Now, moving on to item 10, ordinance is second reading and enactment. Item A, Council Bill 829, Amending Eligibility for Youth Commission. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title into the record?
Council Bill 829, Amending Eligibility for Youth Commission, an ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to the Youth Commission, amending Federway Revised Code 26040.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
I do have discussion, first of all, thank you very much. And secondly, can we, as soon as we pass this, I assume we're passing it, can we get some information out to the youth about the eligibility and that more youth can apply? Can we get something on the city's webpage, or to the schools, or something? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously, thank you. Item B, Council Bill 830, Establishing an Urban Forestry Fund. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title into the record?
Council Bill 830, Establishing an Urban Forestry Fund, an ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to the establishment of an urban forestry fund, adding a new section to Chapter 3 dot 50, Federway Revised Code.
All right. Councilmember Tran?
Mister Mayor, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, thank you. On to council reports, second meeting of the month, we'll start at that end, at the, Councilmember Doby.
I have no report.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
I have no report.
Councilmember Tran?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Asafad Ossin?
No report, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I do.
Exactly. Good for you.
So as was noted earlier tonight, the Federway Farmers Market last, the last day is October 29th, and as is, I was going to say routine, but there's not a routine, as is history with the market, we have a Halloween event on the last day of the market, and this year, it'll be October 29th, from 12 to 2. There'll be free treat bags for ages 12 and under, while supplies last. The Federway Thriller performance will occur, that's a group of citizens that have gotten together and danced to the thriller music, it's, they're dressed in costume, it's pretty cool. There'll be a photo booth, there'll be a costume contest with prizes, and I will be a judge again. And music and food trucks will be there, so come one, come all, it's October 29th, from 12 to 2, which is Saturday. Well, not this Saturday, but Saturday following. And this Saturday, 20, well, this Friday, is Federway High School's homecoming game. If you went to Federway High School, come and see me in the concession stand after Super Supper, that's where I'll be spending my Friday night, so come and see us.
But you went to stadium, didn't it? Bruce went to Federway, right?
Yes, but the Federway Kiwanis staff's at concession stand, and I am advisor to the key club at Federway, so yeah, I, I'm.
Not, get technical. Okay, okay. But Bruce, class of 75?
74.
74. All right, all right. Oh, that's right, that's right, homecoming. And then, actually, Councilmember Doby, weren't you the first graduate in class at a Decatur?
I was, 1973, and we played Federway, and when Bruce and I played each other.
Wow.
I think they won 10 to 9.
Isn't that amazing?
Go Gators.
It was Cass Faber threw a pass that, what was his name, Williams or something? Or he caught it, and they beat us.
Wow. Was Dave Larson on that field? Judge Larson?
Uh, no, I don't, was he, he was two years behind, I think.
Oh, he's just a kid. All right.
How do you guys, how do you guys remember who threw a pass and stuff?
Exactly.
Remember, it was Doug Williams to Cass Farber, we were up, and they beat us. We lost 10 games, I think they won one.
That's fascinating.
That's, that's great. Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I just wanted to clarify, because, all right.
Stadium's still the best high school.
Exactly, a cool one. All right. All right. The council presidents have a report. It's an honor and a privilege to serve with you. Thank you, council, thank you, staff, I appreciate it. Thank you, great comments today, we are adjourned.